With that, I call to order this regular scheduled meeting of the City of Starville Plague as only commission. And as we do before each meeting, I invite you to stand with us and to remain standing for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as we are just in law.
Thank you. Ms. Havlin, could you call a roll call this evening?
It's horrible. That's it.
Ms. West?
Present.
Here.
Ms. Gregory?
Here.
Here.
President.
And Mr. Verdel has notified us of his absence.
Okay, with, uh, if one president or county for the, uh, I want to do just a little bit of housekeeping tonight, if I could. It seems like this may be the new normal. So I talked to Mr. Latimer earlier in the week about, uh, the necessity of roll call votes. And it was his conclusion, and he could probably speak to actual legal things better than me, but his conclusion is long as, you know, it's conspicuous to the public what how we're voting, then everything is fine. So what we will do going forward is instead of roll call votes, we'll have a voice vote as normal. If there's any decision, then we'll have a roll call vote so we can document for the minutes that that's the way everybody votes. As long as everyone's in agreement with the motions, then a voice vote will be fine. And it looks like I can see, I can see Mr. Prather, I can see Ms. Gregory, I can see something on that, I can see Mr. Demus, I can see a hand there. So, and we've got, uh, five public hearings tonight. Rather than going through, uh, at least twice through the roll, asking if there are any more comments, once, once we get through with, uh, with the public hearing part, uh, in, you know, I'll give everybody a chance, and then I'll just ask anybody, you know, if you have any additional comments, just raise your hand. I'm looking at everybody on the screen. We're not going to leave anybody out, and obviously you can just start talking if I miss you, but we'll try to maybe streamline things and speed things up a little bit as we go through these public hearings tonight. But we want to make sure everybody gets, you know, gets their comments in, but we can possibly just, um, raise your hand, not go through the roll as much maybe as we will streamline. Okay, getting that out of the way, the, uh, first item for the commissioners tonight is the consideration of the official agenda. You have one put together by city staff. Again, it has, um, five public hearings, two plat approvals on it. Is there, uh, if there are no suggested changes to this agenda, I would entertain a motion to adopt it as presented by city staff.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Gregory. Now, we'll ask, I will ask that, uh, when you're not speaking, it's best, I think, to keep everyone's mic. You can, you can do that on the corner of the screen if not, um, I'm not the best on this Google, but, uh, Daniel or Matt can keep our way on that.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of feedback, a lot of feedback, um, Mike.
Yeah, uh, it's probably, I think if you would mute your mic in the corner or down the bottom of the screen, you might help some. I'm not sure about Ms. West, she's on the phone. Uh, yeah, if you can mute your mics when you're not speaking, it does seem to, it does seem to help some. My mic is off, I'm speaking through the, you know, actual mic for the whole room here. Uh, we have a motion on the floor, a second to, uh, adopt the, uh, agenda as presented. Uh, any discussion? If not, then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is adopted. First item on the agenda tonight is the consideration for the approvals of the minutes from the June meeting. Uh, Daniel hit a home run, I think. I went through the minutes, didn't find anything. Uh, Ms. Latimer went through the meeting, didn't find anything. Is anyone, did any of the commissioners find any, uh, changes that need to be made to the minutes?
I move approval of the minutes as presented.
We have a motion on the floor, Mr. Demus, to approve the minutes as presented. Do you hear a second? Second by Ms. Morton. Any discussion? And I already told you, please signify by saying aye.
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 I abstained because I was absent.
That Ms. Gregory abstained, she was absent. Any opposed? Then the minutes are approved. Now, the next item on the agenda tonight is time we set aside for citizens' comments. Uh, again, as I've said several times, we've got, uh, five public hearings, two plat approvals on the, on the agenda. If there, does anyone here that would like to address commissioners about an item not on the agenda, now's the time that we ask you to come forward to address commissioners. Anyone here like to address commissioners? Let's ask. Anyone like to address commissioners? All right, hearing none, then we will move into new business with the first item of new business, final plat twenty dash zero one. Mr. Havlin?
FP twenty dash zero one, this is a request by Adam Ingram of TTL Inc. on behalf of the Vista of Starville for the Vista subdivision. The Rose subdivision is located north of the intersection of University Drive and Page Avenue in the T5 U zoning district. The subdivision process was started prior to the effective date of the UDC, and therefore this subdivision is being reviewed under the previous code with the previous zoning designation of T5. Uh, as you can see, this is a large project right across the street, uh, from Bullaw Firders, uh, it's a three grand per month. The gross acreage is seven point three four acres of a total of four lots. All usements and dedications are provided on the final plat. The roadways will be dedicated to the city. Existing Camp Avenue has been improved and extended. Two new roads, North Page Avenue and Vista Avenue have been constructed. Golden Triangle Planning and Development has reviewed for public use and has no issues. Electrical, water, and sanitary sewer services will be provided by Starville Electric. An encroachment agreement and maintenance agreement have been submitted and can be seen in the staff report as attachment six and seven. That would be the revised staff report that was emailed out and also the one that's currently online. The applicant has indicated that this subdivision is not part of any previous implied subdivision, therefore there are no adversely affected parties. In the opinion of the planning department, the proposed final plat request could meet the criteria for final plat review and approval. The following conditions are recommended by city staff. All remaining potential items related to the subdivision infrastructure shall be complete to the city's satisfaction prior to the final plat being executed by city staff. The maintenance agreement as shown in attachment six and the encroachment agreement as shown in attachment seven shall be executed and filed in the land records with the final plat. And if there are any questions?
I do have some, and then we'll open it up to the commissioners. The, the purpose of this maintenance agreement, I mean, it seems like that it's pretty standard. I'm just asking what the purpose of it is.
It's mainly this first time we've had a deal with the skywalks going over the right of way. It's just to make sure for, uh...
But I mean, it addresses the stormwater and all these things. Yeah, it addresses stormwater and stuff that's normally part of the deal. Like, um, the reason I asked about the city streets parking, uh, I did ride through that today. The parallel parking on the streets?
All the street parking is public parking.
That's what I thought. Well, I mean, I'd heard, you know, rumors, people getting tickets down, down there parked on some of the streets, and I was wondering, uh...
Uh, I haven't heard anything about that, but all the, all the parking that's in the development is public parking. I mean, all the parking that's in the right of way is public parking.
Right, so all that...
Parking in the garage is private parking.
Absolutely, that'd be private, but the parking along the street, either parallel parking along the street, uh, public park, okay? And for, um, and I may have missed it, you may have addressed it, the, uh, the encroachment agreement, did you mention exactly what that was?
Yeah, that's for the, uh, the skywalks.
Skywalks, right. They're, they're across Camp Avenue, correct?
Yeah, I believe there's the two of them across Camp Avenue.
Okay, right. Okay. Uh, commissioners, uh, I, I think, is there someone here with the, uh, with the Vista? Yeah, we do have people here with the Vista. If anyone would like to, to, uh, ask any further questions, uh, Ms. Morton? Anyone like to ask any questions, just raise your hand, we'll go through that. I'll say a no from Mr. Prather, say a no from Ms. Gregory, I'll see Jeremiah's picture. Uh, Ms. West? Any questions?
No questions, no.
With that then, I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve or deny this request for the approval of this final plat.
I motion we approve.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Prather to approve the request for final plat approval.
Second.
And a second by, I missed, Ms. West?
Ms. Gregory.
Ms. Gregory, I'm sorry. A second by Ms. Gregory. Discussion.
Just to clarify, I did have the additional, uh, condition that they added.
That's correct, the additional condition that was put on there.
There's a total of two.
Total of two, there's two conditions, Mr. Demus.
What about, was it the red one that you had, the maintenance agreement? Was that the, I thought that was the third.
The maintenance agreement, yeah, the maintenance agreement and the encroachment agreement were, were in this, were in number two.
Okay, got it. No further questions.
Okay. Hearing none, then, no further questions, uh, no further discussion. All in favor of approving this request for a final plat, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The record show was unanimous approval of the final plat. Thank, thank you, gentlemen. All right, the next item, final plat twenty dash zero two. Mr. Havlin?
FP twenty dash zero two, this is a request by Josh Davis of Neil Schaefer on behalf of Double B Properties for the Double B Property Subdivision. The two lots in the Rose subdivision are located at four hundred and four hundred and two North Jackson Street and a T U dash E zoning district. The subdivision process was started prior to the effective date of the UDC, therefore the subdivision is being reviewed under the previous code and previous zoning designation of R three. The gross acreage is point six nine acres with a total of two lots with a proposed density of two point nine units per acre. All usements and dedication are shown on the final plat. Electric, water, and sanitary will be provided by Starville Electric. The application has indicated the subdivision is not part of a previously implied subdivision, therefore no adversely affected parties. In the opinion of the planning department, the proposed final plat request could meet the criteria for final plat review and approval. There are two staff recommended conditions. No temporary or permanent certificate of occupancy shall be issued for any structure on either lot before all infrastructure is complete to the satisfaction of all city departments, and the surety for all remaining required improvements shall remain in effect until the city has inspected and approved. Um, both of those conditions are relating to the infrastructure that's, that needs to be put on the site, and it's mainly sidewalks. And it's just, uh, to allow them to do the construction of what they're planning on doing without having the sidewalks in place first, they can... Is there any other question?
Yeah, I think that, uh, maybe fleshed out a little bit in number eight, uh, when it's, when it, or, when it comes to us, all this stuff is supposed to be for the final plat, it should be all built, correct?
Correct.
And this, you might explain what, what the cart before the horse of the sketch twenty two deal is on this particular one.
Because it's so small, and because, uh, they have already gone through site plan approval, they're building two fourplex units, or one on each lot, and with such a small site, if you required them to build a sidewalk first before they even platted it, there'd be a high likelihood that it would get ruined during the construction of two buildings. So by allowing them to provide a form of surety, and, uh, that it gives them a way to proceed, and also at the end of the project, the city will get the sidewalk that's required and needed.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Thank you, because it's just a little different than what we normally see on a final plat.
Yeah, true.
Okay. Uh, questions for Ms. Havlin, Ms. Morton? Any question, Ms. Havlin, just raise your hand, or, or pick up Mr. Demus, don't see your hands, see your face, picture. Ms. West?
No question.
Okay, is there anyone here for the applicant? You are here, the applicant has a representative here, if you'd like to ask any questions of, of the applicant. Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to either approve or deny this request for this final plat approval.
I move that we approve this request for final plat approval with the conditions as noted.
We have a motion by Ms. Gregory to approve with the conditions as noted. The two conditions, do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Demus. Discussion. You want to have anything to add? Ms. West?
Nothing to add.
And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, uh, the, the flat, final plat is approved, was adopted unanimously, approved unanimously. You do understand that we're an advisory board and head school in Congress, four of all of them.
And this is, uh, going to the agenda for the four of all of our next people.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thanks. All right, moving right along here, item number C. This is special exception twenty dash zero nine, and this will require a public hearing.
Yes, and this is the first of three very similar requests. It's all on the same piece of property, but it's different areas that are being denoted for each one. Uh, the first one is SC twenty dash zero nine, this is a request by Ayesha Edwards on behalf of Starville October County or Starville October Consolidated School District for a special exception to allow for manufactured homes on the west side of Sand Road in Area K, approximately two thousand and thirty-five feet south of Louisville Street. The used chart requires special exception for dwelling manufactured for modular home in an R N zoning district. Home site area shown is one hundred and fifteen feet wide of the road, the total square footage is forty thousand three hundred and sixty-five square feet. The minimum required lot area is forty thousand square feet. Required setbacks are front thirty feet, rear twenty-five feet, side ten feet. There are currently no other dwellings on the home site area. The request was notified in accordance with section three point four point three D of the UDC. Thirty-six property owners of record, seven hundred and sixty-two of the subject property were notified by mail. A legal ad was published to Starville Daily News on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty, and a sign was posted on a property in a conspicuous location. As of this date, the planning office received no response from the notification. The three point four one lists a criteria for special exception. Section thirteen point three point four of the UDC requires a special exception meet the additional standards for that use. Thirteen point five point eight D of lists the eleven additional standards for the proposed use. Um, the planning department has, uh, in the opinion of the planning department, the proposed use associated with special exception request could meet the criteria for special exception review and approval. Is there anything specific to question?
So, so, yeah, this is Kelly, I have a question. Um, can you explain, what are these units going to be used for?
Uh, these are all residential manufactured home sites. The school district has recently, I believe, started logging some of the sixteen section property, is piecing out these small areas for manufactured homes.
Okay.
There, there, yeah, if you look on that map, you'll see the, the, the legend down the side of Sand Road, and you see all those, I mean, they have to be one acre, we sell those lots.
Right, I got it.
And all those manufactured homes.
Okay, that explains, yeah, that explains it, I was a little confused by that, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Prather, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Havlin? Okay, again, this will be a public hearing, uh, the first of three, and I will convene the public hearing, and the applicant, is anyone here representing the applicant? Ms. Edwards? If you would, if you please come forward. You can state your name for the record and sign in, we got a, 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 a row right there.
My name is Ayesha Edwards.
Okay, if you would just sign in right there for us. Ma'am, just, I just, I want to ask you a question. Now, you are aware of these additional standards for the, for the manufactured home that is required, that, uh, there were twelve, eleven standards that are required?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, if you would just, what you're saying, is anyone, uh, the applicant is here, Ms. Edwards is here, is anyone like to, uh, ask Ms. Edwards any questions? Ms. Morton?
Question.
Ms. Prather?
No.
Ms. West? Ms. Gregory?
No.
Demus?
No.
Okay. All right, so do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Do you want, anyone else here, this is a public hearing, anyone else here that would like to, to, uh, address commissioners on this request? Hearing none, then we will close the public hearing, do our deliberations. This is again...
Daniel, just to be, Daniel, just to be clear, this doesn't include any of the parcels on, um, old twenty-five, correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
That is correct, these, these are all on Sand Road.
The current area that they're actively trying to lease is all on Sand Road, but in the future, I could see them trying to do some double point five also, but that's not part of this request.
Okay, well, uh, I move approval of the, uh, item as presented with the conditions.
All right, Mr. Demus has a motion on the floor to approve this request with the conditions as stated. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second, I had a second by Ms. Morton, she beat you to it, Ms. West, sorry. Uh, uh, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, then, all in favor of the request, the special exception to allow the manufactured home, uh, in Area K, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, the motion passes unanimously.
Hey, Daniel, I want to go on the record, I, I know I've asked this before, uh, and if the school district has any discussion with you prior to, I, I don't think I'm going to be as openly accepting to, um, them parsing out and placing multiple mobile home sites on Old Louisville Street. So when those requests come in, I hope there's a way that there can be discussions that can lead against that.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with Jeremiah.
Yeah, I, I think that might be a general consensus, thank you, Mr. Demus. Uh, I think the applicant did, uh, leave after she made her presentation, but she does, she is aware?
Yes, uh, and I'll, I'll send out an email again to, uh, to her and the other applicant.
Okay, all right, that's, uh, one of them, okay. SC twenty dash ten.
SC twenty dash ten, this is a request by Tyler Dooley on behalf of Starville October Consolidated School District for a special exception to allow manufactured homes on the west side of Sand Road in Area G and H, approximately sixteen hundred and thirty-two feet south of Louisville Street. The, the used chart requires special exception for dwelling manufactured by a newer home in an R N zoning district. The home site area as shown is a combined width of two hundred and thirty feet at the road, with a total square footage of eighty thousand seven hundred and thirty. Required minimum lot area for use is forty thousand square feet. Required setbacks are as follows, front thirty, rear twenty-five, side ten. There are currently no dwellings on the home site area. The request was noticed in accordance with section three point four point three point E of the UDC. Thirty-six property owners of record of at one hundred and sixty feet of the subject property are notified directly by mail of the request. A legal ad was published to Starville Daily News on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty. A sign was posted on the property in a conspicuous location. As of this date, the planning office has received no responses from the notification. Section three point four point one lists a criteria for special exception of approval. Section thirteen point three point four of the UDC also requires that a special exception meet the additional standards for that use. Section thirteen point five point eight D lists the eleven additional standards for the proposed use. In the opinion of the planning department, the proposed use associated with special exception request could meet the criteria for special exception review and approval. And just to clarify, this is two lots that, uh, that is actually going, what's the lease that are next to each other, it's, it's, it's not technically a, a separate piece of property, the setbacks are for the main piece of property, not the individual area.
Yeah, one of the, one of the leasing, two lots on this one, it's twice as big as what?
Yeah, I guess it was their option.
Yeah, okay. Now, any other questions for Mr. Havlin? Any other question, Mr. Havlin? Okay, again, this will be a public hearing, uh, we'll convene the public hearing with that, and is the applicant here? Anyone representing the applicant here? I think so, no applicant. Um, is anyone here that'd like to speak on this request? Anyone in the audience like to speak on this request? Hearing none, then, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, in the, in the, uh, the one that you've been with us for quite some time, we've, in most cases, when we did, we had an applicant that didn't show, we either tabled it or, uh, just denied the request, or tabled it at, at, at bed, but I, I would probably be, I'd be a little hesitant, I think, tonight with, with all this coronavirus stuff going on, but that is obviously your choice, I just thought I would put that out there and like, give them a bit of, uh, leeway. Having said that, discussion. Ms. Morton? Ms. West?
I, I do have a question, and I guess I want to know, because these mobile homes are within the city limits, are, they're going to check to make sure they're up to, uh, city code and all of that? Or they're just going to, just, we're just going to approve and then that's it, they just, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am, you know, if you read the additional standards, they, those eleven standards, several of those are, are, uh, pretty specific as far as the building code of fairness, the seal of compliance, and the siding that have to have, and the roof pitch, Mr. Havlin can speak to that probably better than...
Manufactured homes are different. It's built within the city of Starville, if you build a building or structure in the city of Starville, it has the, the international residential code or international, okay? Manufactured homes are different, uh, it was something created back in the early seventies or nineteen seventy-two when it created the manufactured home kind of standards, they have to follow their own standards. A mobile home is something that's pre nineteen seventy-two. After nineteen seventy-two, the manufactured homes, they fall under a federal standard. Once they're approved by the city, they're moved onto the site, and then they apply with the state fire marshal for inspection, they get a sticker put on it, then they apply with the city for an electrical permit, at which time the city sends out an inspector to inspect it, to hook it up for electrical. Once that's hooked up and they go hot, then that, that's, up and they go hot, then that's the gist of the inspection.
Okay, yeah, but, but they're...
Additional standards were meant to kind of add some extra stuff on there that would...
See, yeah, okay. That, did that clear things up for you, Ms. West? Hello, Ms. West? Maybe so, okay. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Havlin?
I move to table the item.
Okay, we have a motion to table the item. Do you hear a second? Do you hear a second to table? No, no second. And we have a motion on the floor to approve.
I move to approve.
Ms. Gregory, we, uh, Ms. Morton made the motion to approve, would you like to make a second?
Second, I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Morton and a second by Ms. Gregory, discussion. Make sure we get everybody on board here, discussion, Ms. Morton. Mr. Prather, still on with us?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Ms. West?
No, we're touching.
Ms. Gregory?
I was just going to say that I don't think we should hold it against people in this time if they don't show up for something like this that we would normally have no problems with.
Yeah, so, uh, Jeremiah, what are your, what are your thoughts on it? Why would you want to table it?
Just probably because I tabled the last one to be consistent, but I don't disagree with Alexis.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
That's, that's my thoughts also.
Okay.
And, do you have anything else to add? Mr. Demus, anything else to add?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, then the motion on the floor to approve, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So it does, uh, it does appear unanimously. We have approved, uh, this request. And you will send out the email, I'm sure. Yes, okay. All right, so, what do you have now? I have number E, that's special exception twenty dash thirteen.
Twenty-nine thirteen, this is a request by Paris Fuller on behalf of the Starkville October Consolidated School District for a special exception to allow for manufactured home on the west side of Sand Road in areas N and O, approximately three thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven feet south of Louisville. The used chart requires a special exception for dwelling manufactured by the home in an R and zoning district. Home site area has a combined width of two hundred and thirty feet at the road with a total square footage of eighty thousand seven hundred and thirty. Required minimum lot area for use is forty thousand square feet. Required setbacks are as followed, in the front thirty feet, rear twenty-five feet, side ten feet. There are currently no other dwellings on the home site area. The request was noticed in accordance with section three point four point three point E of the UMI Development Code. Thirty-six property owners of record with a hundred and sixty feet of the subject property are notified directly by mail of the request. The legal ad was published in the Starkville Daily News on June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, and a sign posted on the property in a conspicuous location. As of this date, the planning office has received no, uh, response from the notifications. Section three point four point one lists a criteria for special exception approval. Section thirteen point three point four of the UDC also requires that a special exception need the additional standards for that use. Section thirteen point five point eight D lists the eleven additional standards for the proposed use. And in the opinion of the planning department, proposed use associated with the special exception request could meet the criteria for special exception.
Okay. You, you will clean that up in, for the minutes, N and O, and, you know, second.
Uh, Erin, is that before?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the actual answer.
Okay, all right, good deal. Thank you. Okay, any questions for Mr. Havlin? This one's just further down Sand Road, looks like. Okay. All right, so no question, Mr. Havlin, then we'll convene a, another public hearing. Is the applicant here? If you please come forward, and, uh, if you would, state, there's a roll there, you can sign in for us and state your name for the record.
My name is Pam Bowen.
Thank you. Now, I would like to ask, you are aware of these additional standards we've already discussed about how it has to be, uh, about the requirements of the manufactured home, about the inspection and that sort of stuff?
Yes.
You are aware of that? Okay, if you would, wait just a second, we'll make sure if anybody else, do you have anything you'd like to add? Because you got, the commissioners are, are watching, or if you have anything you'd like to add. Okay, all right, just hold on one second. The applicant's here, so you can all see her. Anyone have any questions to the applicant? Ms. Mooreland? Ms. Prather?
No questions.
All right, Ms. Ms. West?
No questions.
Ms. Gregory saying no, and Mr. Demus?
None.
None, okay, all right. Anything else to add? Thank you. We will, we will close the public hearing then, and let's say the commissioners.
I move to approve, uh, with conditions as stated.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Demus to approve a condition as stated. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a second by Ms. Mooreland. Um, discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, then, uh, your request has been approved by the planning of its own commission, and you do understand that we're the advisory board and the National Front Board of Audit. Mr. Havlin can, can direct you as-
It'll be, uh, the obvious.
All right. The next item, special exception twenty dash one two, got one of our own here. Ms. Mooreland is excusing herself from the, from the commission's table here, if you will, to make this presentation. Uh, Mr. Havlin?
SC twenty dash twelve, this is a request by Kim Moreland of Moreland Holdings on behalf of Starkville October Consolidated School District for a special exception to allow for, for a recreational vehicle park and mini storage facility on the west side of Louisville Street, approximately eight hundred feet north of Warrior Drive. The used chart requires a special exception for recreational vehicle parks and, and storage facilities in an R and zoning district. And, uh, you could see this, if you're aware of their existing business, which is a, a storage facility and recreational vehicle park is directly to the south of that. Uh, but this portion is actually on school property, sixteen sections laying. The applicant has entered into agreement with the school district to lease ten point zero six acres directly north of their current business, Moreland RV Park. The lease area would be an extension of the business with additional storage units and RV spots. Only the leased portion of the property is to be used for the proposed use. The applicant provided a conceptual site plan of the proposed use, which you can see on the screen. Um, it's showing the, the three structures that would be the storage, and then the pads for the RV use. The request was noticed, uh, in accordance with section three point four point three E of the UDC. Sixteen property owners of record with a hundred and sixty feet of subject property are notified directly by mail of the request. The legal ad was published in the Starkville Daily News on June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, and a sign posted on a property in a conspicuous location. As of this date, the planning office has received no response from the notification. Section three point four point one lists a criteria for a special exception approval. Sections thirteen point three point four of the UDC also require that a special exception meet the additional standards for that use. Sections thirteen point seven point two one D lists five additional standards for the proposed use of recreational vehicle parks. And section thirteen point seven point fourteen point D lists four additional standards for the proposed use of mini storage. In the opinion of the planning department, the proposed use associated with special exception request could meet the criteria for special exception review and approval. Is there any question?
Uh, okay, uh, so, number four, under the recreational vehicle parks, they're, they're, they have to file a restricted covenant about the two weeks deal?
Yes.
And that's pretty standard. Most of, most of I know going RV guy, so, you know, two, two weeks is pretty standard for staying in recreational vehicle parks, right? And each-
And as of any additional standard associated with special exception, if the applicant has an issue with any of these, now is time to make the request to have that remitted as a condition.
As, as we give the, pardon, yes, drive, right. And then, and then the city requires, um, sewer at each, water access to each one of the sites.
Yes, I believe so. And, uh, they've, they've already done a preliminary, a pre-application meeting with the developer, city, and, and talks with, uh, Starkville Utilities on the water and sewer connection to the site, which I presume is every unit.
All right, good deal. Questions for Mr. Havlin? Any question, Mr. Havlin? No, Ms. Gregory says no.
Daniel, this goes back, where you, and Kim, you may be able to ask this, or answer this, there was, there was a special exception or something dealing with the gravel of the last one. Was, is that not required now? I can't remember what that was, but is it the time-
That was a variance from the parking requirements in the old code, which said that any parking or vehicle in this area adjacent to the street could not be gravelled. Uh, the new code addresses that better, where you can have the gravel in the zoning district, but it does require a concrete apron to keep the gravel from, uh, getting into the main road.
Got it. So that, that variance process, which I know that probably doesn't even exist anymore, but that, um, that's no longer needed.
Yes, we, we addressed that in the UDC to, to prevent that issue from coming up again in the future.
Got it.
All right, no other questions, Mr. Havlin, we'll convene a public hearing. And just for the record, if you would, state your name and sign in for us.
Kim Moreland.
All right. If this is, uh, I mean, it's pretty obvious, it's just a continuation of what you got going south, yeah. I rode by there, they look like they're full.
They are full.
Yeah, I thought so.
Very size of man for last apparently around here.
Yeah, evidently so. Uh, and, and in your beha-, uh, I guess in your stead, I will say that CBS ran a bill this morning that RVs were one of the one things that were actually taken off right now.
Yeah, we, we take them fast enough. I mean, we should have done this last year.
So anything you'd like to add?
It's just a continuation of what we have. As far as landscape, everything's going to be, going to match the existing property that led to this.
But you won't explain, explain to us, I'm sure they can see that now, so it looks to me like if I rode out there, you're going to come in from one of your existing-
The existing entrance gate, we're going to use the same gate to keep the flow of traffic.
Oh, going, and then it'll go north?
And it's kind of, you're going to go in and come around the existing boat storage building, the RV storage building we have, and you can see right there, that-
Right.
They go south of that.
Of course, I mean, that's conceptual, and this is really a land use decision, but it is good to see what you've got planned.
And then that gets the road will take you off the stage.
Yeah, okay. All right. Twenty, twenty RV lots is what you-
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay. Anything else you'd like to add? Okay. Questions from Ms. Mooreland? Ms. Prather?
No, this looks good.
Okay. Ms. West?
No question.
Ms. Gregory shaking her head, no. Mr. Demus?
None.
None, okay. Anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Mooreland, on how it works? Okay. Is anyone else here that would like to address the commissioners regarding this request? Anyone else like to address commissioners? And we'll close this public hearing, move to deliberations. Commissioners, what say you?
Move approval.
We have a motion on the floor, Mr. Demus, to approve this special request, a special exception request. Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Prather. Discussion. Ms. Gregory? Nothing. What about Ms. West?
No.
No, okay. Anything else to add, Mr. Demus? Then, all in favor of the motion to approve this special request or special exception, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, nay. Thank you. It is, let's record show that it was approved unanimously. Thank you, Mooreland. You know, you know the deal, uh, on front boards. When would that be, Ms. Havlin? When, when was she going front of the board?
August fourth.
August fourth, okay, all right. Thank you. All right, we have one more, looks like, here. We move along to, aye. Use exception. We, we, this, I think maybe one of our first use exceptions, and I want to-
This, this is the, the first use exception, exception, and, uh, just explain the difference in a special exception and a use exception. Special exception generally requires like some form of construction of a facility or the modification of an existing facility to allow the use to come in, which makes it more of a permanent nature, whereas a use exception is something that doesn't modify the site of the building in great extent to where it could be another use relatively short. Uh, and a use exception, unlike a special exception, does expire once the applicant moves from, moving to the, uh, without coming through the property for another use exception.
So, with, it goes with the applicant, in other words, if, you have church, for instance, and they move out, another church couldn't come in.
Correct, they, they would have to, the, the new church would have to reapply.
Okay, so it is strictly with that. Okay. All right, with that said, UE twenty dash zero one, Mr. Havlin?
This is a request, a request by, uh, West uh, of the Orchard Church on behalf of RMR Investment Company LLC for a use exception to allow for a place of worship located at seven oh eight Taylor Road. The applicant is requesting operating the Orchard Church out of suite D and C. The used chart requires a use exception or a special exception for a place of worship in a C zoning district. The proposed use does not require construction of a new building or a major modification of an existing building or site. Therefore, the request will be reviewed as a use exception. The request was notified in accordance with section three point five point three E of the UDC. Sixteen property owners of record with a hundred and sixty feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of the request. A legal ad was published in the Starkville Daily News on June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, and a sign posted on the property in a conspicuous location. As of this date, the planning office has received no response from the notifications. Sections three point five point one lists six criteria for use exception approval, which differ from the special exception approval. Sections thirteen point three point three of the UDC require that a use exception meet the additional standards for that use. Sections thirteen point six point one four D lists the five additional standards for the proposed use. And in the opinion of the planning department, the proposed use associated with the use exception request could meet the criteria for use exception review and approval. If there are any questions?
Uh, parking. I, I do have a question about parking. Can you address that, Parkman?
Uh, yeah, when they initially made the application, uh, being, uh, one of their representatives kind of looked over the site, and the parking should not be an issue. Uh, there's plenty of parking on that kind of condo site, and then also taking into consideration the kinds of use within the max capacity, the other tenants in the area would not be in operation. So, the, the parking is, uh, totally adequate, the, the site's adequate for the use.
Uh, I'm not sure, I can't remember, but I, I think those, those buildings are condos, but well, I'm sure the applicants can probably square sort of that. I think at one time they were in, okay. All right, uh, question for Mr. Havlin. Any question, Mr. Havlin, Ms. Mooreland? Ms. Prather?
No questions.
Ms. West?
No questions.
And Mr. Demus?
No questions, no.
All right, okay. No questions for the, uh, Ms. Havlin, then we'll convene a public hearing. Uh, I'm assuming we have someone representing the applicant here, we got our last three standards of our cities, I guess you got to be, so, uh, anyone or all, you know, you can come up one at a time, whoever needs to make a presentation. We just ask that someone make a presentation. You can state your name, for the record, sign in, and, uh, just give a little quick rundown of what you want to do, and then maybe they'll have some questions.
Sure, my name's Ben Beavers.
Ben Beavers, yes, sir, Mr. Beavers. Okay, you have anything you want to, any present things you want to add to what Mr. Havlin said?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to answer any questions that the commissioner may have.
The, the building, I'm, I'm familiar with that building. I think it was USDA maybe put in there one time. Are you familiar with it? I know it's not good to get, uh-
I believe so.
Yeah, you might answer that. Do you know how long it's been vacant? I know it's been vacant a long time.
Couple years, I believe.
She's in part of, yeah. I got you, okay, all right. And how long do you, to be, do you plan to be at this spot? Do you, do you set your times or?
Like a lease kind of? Um, it's a three-year lease with options to renew.
Okay, all right, you got a three-year lease, okay, all right. Any questions for Mr. Beavers? Ms. Prather?
No questions.
Ben, you still know my four things?
You better than mine.
I know Ben knows way back. I hadn't talked to Ben. Ben, I, I hate I'm not there, but, uh, it's good to hear from you.
It's there.
I, I do have one question.
Sure.
Just, especially with everything going on now. You know, the city has certain rules about alcohol and that sort of stuff. And, and obviously what's going on there now is not a problem. But, you know, you, you'd hate to, I mean, there's a hairdressing place in one of those and, and they're struggling. If somebody went out, I think, I think, and I can ask Mr. Latimer, uh, I, I believe that you, you're allowed to sign some sort of waiver if somebody wanted to put something in there, because what's the rule, Mr. Havlin? Hundred feet or so from a-
They're hundred, hundred fifty. It's, the city ordinance lines up with state law.
Mr. Latimer, can you address that? I'm just asking for what the, what the law is. If they can sign a waiver, I'm just asking if they would be willing to sign a waiver if, if that were to, if somebody wanted to put a restaurant in the other side of that building.
That's right. That's a, that's an option. A waiver's an option around the one hundred and fifty foot rule. That's correct.
Right, so, is that something y'all be willing to-
Yes, I discussed that with our lead pastor, our main campus, you know, about the possibility of that and we would not approve.
But I mean, it, it wouldn't be there when y'all were there anyway, you know. I just want to get that out there, get it on record in case something- I, I wouldn't want to, but obviously Mr. Havlin noted that and they didn't have any problem with it, but, but you're, you're on record there. Any other questions for Mr. Beavers? No? Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else here, Ms. Wade, do you have anything you want to add? No? Okay. If not, then we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Let's say the commissioners.
So Daniel, the terminology here is, uh, approval of a use exception? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I move to approve the use exception as presented.
I will second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dumas, second by Mr. Prather, approve this use exception. Discussion. Ms. West? No?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Gregory saying that, okay. With that said, there's one more, you can say that. Ben, all in favor of the motion to approve this use, a request for use exception, please signify by saying aye.
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 Did everybody? Any opposed? Any none, then it, 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 uh, approved unanimously. Congratulations. But again, we're advisory board, I say to everybody, y'all gotta go in front of the board of audit. Everyone says what time it is, we just gotta finish up the way.
And that would be the August fourth, the year of it. Uh, and that's what we, very long.
All right. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Havlin?
Um, it does look like for the foreseeable future, this is how we will be operating. Um, if there's any issues you're having or recommendations for how you'd like to do it differently, please let us know. You are allowed to come in and tend in person if that would be easier for you, as long as we can maintain the social distancing guidelines that are recommended at the top. Um, but, you know, as always, if you have anything to add or any questions, please just let me know.
If anybody knows how to keep their glasses from fogging up, that'd be good advice too, for me.
Contacts.
Yeah, contacts, I could go back. Mr. Latimer, uh, we kind of sped things up tonight a little bit and moved a little bit differently than we had in the past. Is this pasture muster, I mean, is it okay?
It does. Y'all can keep on trucking like this. Uh, if there's any doubt about how somebody's voting, do a roll call, but if it's crystal clear, uh, you can ask for eyes en masse, like you've been doing.
Okay, good. We, we did pretty good.
Question. Um, is there a way that we can get a camera so that we can see who is speaking besides the commissioners? Because I couldn't see any of the people who were presenting today or representing applicants.
Okay, Ms., uh, Matt, is that correct, Matt? Matt is sitting over there kind of hiding in the corner. He's running the show, but he says he can, he'll take care of that for us next time. Good point, Ms. Gregory.
And then a lot of times, I would, um, make a motion at the same time as some of the commissioners who were in attendance, and I could not hear that. So I don't know if it's working on the microphones, because I could hear you okay, Mike. Um, at first, I couldn't hear Daniel very well at all. And, um, so I'm just wondering if maybe we could do some mic tests at the beginning of the meeting too, just to make sure that we can hear everybody, um, if we're not there in person.
We're currently working off of one mic on a phone, uh, that we all speak for, that is sitting next to Commissioner Brooks. But I believe the I T department is in the process of, uh, working that issue out by ordering additional microphones that fit into the phone system. So hopefully by next meeting, that'll be worked out.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that is. Okay, yeah, that's a problem. We, we got this one right here. Anything else? Anyone else like to add anything? Well, if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 May you adjourn? Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.